I now call to order the December tenth, twenty twenty four Board of Trustees Meeting, time being six thirty P M. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Daly. Trustee Moyer.
Present.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Mayor Protim Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Okay, I am going to move the proclamation forward. Uh, so we don't have people standing here for a very long time, so we can get this, um, get them back to home for dinner and things of that nature. Um, so this proclamation is for an outstanding night of accomplishment for you guys. Um, whereas it is fitting and proper to celebrate the outstanding achievements of the Wellington High School football team, whose success has brought honor and inspiration to our town. Whereas the Wellington High School football team has demonstrated extraordinary commitment and perseverance since the school's reopening in twenty twenty two, establishing a legacy of excellence and determination. And whereas, in an extraordinary feat of athleticism and teamwork, this team has reached the pinnacle of competition by advancing to the Colorado two-way state football championships that was on November thirtieth, twenty twenty four. And whereas, these student athletes and their dedicated coaching staff have shown remarkable resolve, turning early challenges into the foundation of success and showcasing the values of hard work, resilience, and sportsmanship. And whereas, the accomplishments of this team reflect the unwavering support of their families and the entire Wellington community, embodying the power of unity and shared pride. And whereas, the triumphs of this team serve as a beacon of inspiration, encouraging the youth of Wellington to dream boldly, work tirelessly, and embrace the pursuit of excellence. Now, therefore, I, Kayla Shosse, the Mayor of Wellington, Colorado, do hereby proclaim December tenth, twenty twenty four, as a night of outstanding accomplishment in honor of the Wellington football team, whose exceptional achievements have enriched our community and set a powerful example for future generations. In witness therefore of, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Wellington to be affixed to this, December tenth, twenty twenty four. Those of you, um, I'd like to get a picture up, so all the athletes, coaches, come on up here. I'll, uh, hand this off to Coach Peoples.
How are you? Oh, good, good, good.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good to see ya.
See you.
You got a lot of big people here.
Yes.
Guess I can go to the back.
Who do you want to hold this?
Where we want to hold, give it to, uh, it looks like we got cash right there in the front, number five. We lost touchdowns this year.
Everybody got their picture?
Appreciate it, man. Good to see you. Thanks for doing this. Appreciate it.
You guys celebrating us, that was.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Congratulations. Thank you.
Hey, you. Yeah. How are you? Thanks, thanks, Jeff.
It's a great day. It was a great day. That's worked their hearts out, they did.
Hey, I'd like to say one thing, as the head football coach of this group, this is the hardest working group of football players and coaches I've ever been around in thirty years, the town of Wellington. You did it right. Um, we came up short, trust me, it still hurts, and we don't want to talk about it. Uh, we think we had it in our hands. Actually, number eight, who stripped the balls here right here today. But, uh, I can tell you the work and the effort that went into this the last three years, you guys hit it right on the mark with what you gave us in that proclamation. Uh, these kids are the hardest working kids I've ever been around, and it's an attribute to this town, to the parents, to the people back here who raised these kids. They are tougher than any other kids in the state of Colorado, and I'll say this probably tougher than anybody else in the country. Clap it up for these guys. Yeah. I mean, too tough for everybody else. They're tougher for us. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Have fun. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your support. What a great place to be right now, huh?
Take care. See ya. Let's see you.
Thank you.
Take care, okay?
Stay loved in Colorado. Most new for the meeting ever. Ever.
That was sweet. That was sweet. Okay, uh, are there any conflicts of interest with the agenda scene? No? Okay, now is the time for public comment. Members, members of the public wishing to speak will be given three minutes on non-agenda items. Uh, please state your name for the record. And now is your time. No public comment. Okay. Okay, I will now recess the regular meeting, open the Liquor License Authority Board, time being six thirty nine P M. Ms. Clerk, will you please do a roll call?
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Moyer.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Uh, Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Mayor Protim Mason.
Here.
Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Mayor, there's a quorum of authority.
Thank you. Could we, uh, maybe turn the mic down, please? Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Uh, will the town attorney please address the role of Liquor License Authority?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Dan Sapienza. Um, on the agenda tonight for Liquor License Authority is a new liquor license application, and prior to this item being discussed, I thought it would be appropriate to, um, discuss with the board, um, something that we've had a presentation about in the past, and that's quasi judicial hearings. Um, this is an important part of the role of this body, it's where you step outside of your legislative role and put on a different hat. Um, we've talked about this a lot, largely in the context of land use hearings, but thought this would be a good opportunity to reiterate all of this, um, for the Liquor Licensing Board, for the board and for members of the public. A quasi judicial hearing is a, a, a hearing where you sit as judge for an applicant, um, and you'll judge, you'll make a judgment, um, for something that impacts their rights. So it's very important that we protect their due process in this. In making your determination, you'll first look at the record. The record in a case like this involves the written material that's in your packet, um, staff presentation, and a presentation from the applicant, public comments, and then, of course, questions from this board. Following the completion of that record and the closing of the public hearing, it'll be time for deliberation of this board, and that's where you use the evidence received as part of that record and apply it to the law and the standards in this case. Um, and that'll all be discussed as part of the staff presentation. Following deliberation, you'll make a decision, and that decision needs to be based on that evidence that's in the record. So if you have any questions during all of this, um, always feel free to ask, and, um, we'll get this going.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item C one?
New Liquor License Application, M F, M F F L T D Doing Business As Soul Squared, A Tavern License.
Thank you. And then Hannah Hill, the town clerk, will present on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Hannah Hill, Town Clerk. Um, the application for this tavern license was submitted to the clerk's office on November seventh for concurrent review, which, as you all are aware, I'm sure, just means that the state reviews it at the same time as the local authority. Notice was posted at the premise for ten consecutive days, um, and a notice was posted in the Colorado end as well, according to state statute. The applicant did provide the lease and partnership doc, documents with the application. Those are not included in your packet, simply because of the nature of the, um, information in the documents. I do have a paper copy if the authority wants to review it. The required individuals also submitted their individual history reports, and the background checks did come back. Um, nothing was seen that would indicate a concern with the liquor license. Again, because of the nature of the documents, those were not included in the packet, but I do have paper copies if the authority would like to review them. Um, for the needs and desires petition, a boundary of half a mile was set, simply because that is standard for other licenses in this area, um, and best practice is for a tavern license about half a mile. The applicant did conduct their own needs and desires petition. Forty-seven total signatures, um, all in favor of this application, were submitted on that petition. I do want to say the, um, after review of the signatures, thirty-seven staff did accept. Um, ten, we did kick out because they were outside of the boundary of half a mile. I do want to note, all of those signatures were, um, residents of Wellington, they were just outside that half-mile boundary. Um, planning and zoning did note that this isn't allowed use for the area, and the Larimer County Sheriff did conduct an inspection, um, which is included in your packet. Some of those items were not relevant, simply because the applicant is not open. If the authority would approve this license, the staff will continue working with the state to finalize the process, um, and any, make sure any required inspections are approved before releasing the license to the applicant. Staff does recommend approval of this tavern license, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this item? Trustee Moyer. Thank you. Trustee Teets. Thank you. Trustee Wiegand. Trustee Cannon. Trustee Daly.
Looks like overwhelming support, so I have no questions, thank you.
Mayor Protim. Thank you. I have no further questions either. Any comments from the public on this item?
Mr. Mayor, it'd be appropriate to have the applicant.
Okay. That makes sense. Would you guys like to present on this item?
Super excited. So, so we're the new owners. We, we bought it from Mary and Erin a year ago and have been trying to get back open ever since. So we are super excited to be here and ready to get back open. Um, I don't think anybody needs to explain any history on Soul Squared. It's been a staple in this town for nine-plus years, so.
And we did do everything to keep it here in Wellington.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Very much so.
Are you guys going to have bingo?
Yes.
Yes. Bingo and game night, absolutely. Yeah.
Perfect. Well, thank you, guys, for sharing that with us. Um, at this point, I will open it up for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak will be given three minutes. Going once, going twice, so, okay, no public comment, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do I hear a motion on this item?
Deliberate. I make a motion to.
Just a second.
Do that after the motion.
But it's after the motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect. So I got a motion?
Now we can do the motion?
Yes.
By all means.
I make a motion to approve the application for a tavern license for M F F L T D Doing Business As Soul Squared Tavern License.
I second.
Final deliberation from the board on this item. Trustee Moyer.
I am very happy to see you all return and enthusiastic about all of the community conversations that will happen now at Soul Squared again. Thank you.
Trustee Teets.
I'm just excited for you guys to be joining us. I'm excited to see increased sales tax revenue again, so we can improve our community. I'm grateful that you guys chose Wellington, even though their comments and everything else that goes around, you guys will end up having a lot of support in this community that, and I'm pretty sure I'll get to see some of you guys if you do end up hosting bingo, it's apparently my thing. So, welcome.
Thank you. Trustee Wiegand.
Just saying, I'm extremely pleased that we got a new business coming into town and looking forward to being there. Thank you.
Trustee Cannon.
Thank you. Congratulations. Um, that may be a little premature, since we haven't voted yet, but, but I expect it to go well. Uh, there's been a hole in our main street since Soul Squared left, and it's, and it's wonderful to see you coming back, to see this, this hole being filled with, with such a vital part of our downtown. And, uh, this was a community gathering place for, for many years, and it's been missed, and we're looking forward to having you back. Thank you so much.
Trustee Daly.
Thank you for your investment in Wellington and the commitment to staying here. It, it really means a lot to us. Thank you very much.
Mayor Protim.
Well, I think everybody here said, uh, said, uh, you know, basically how important you guys are to the community, so, uh, I just want to say welcome back, and hopefully my chair is still there, so.
I still have a mug.
Yeah, yeah, I still have my mug. Um, welcome, welcome back. Super excited about this. Uh, super cool to see you guys investing back into Wellington and wanting to keep it here. Um, you guys are gonna do well, and it's gonna be nice to have that back as a staple in the town, and just thank you very much for, for bringing that back to us. Uh, okay. Clerk, do I have a roll call, please?
Uh, Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Hundred percent, yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Mayor, um. Past unanimously, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item C two?
Come and Go L C Doing Business As Maverick Fifty-One Fifty License Renewal.
Thank you. Will you please present on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the town clerk's office did receive this renewal, as well as the included in the packet mailing address change. Um, the application is in good standing and has a current sales tax license. A list of all the corporation violations are included, however, none were noted, um, in Wellington. A list of all the corporation licenses was also included in the application, however, there are many Mavericks in Colorado, so staff did not include that in the packet. I do have a paper copy if you would like to review all of them. Um, I do want to note that the application checked that they would like to apply for a two-year renewal, which the authority might know as a new program the state rolled out this summer. Um, statute does require the local authority to opt into this. Um, we do not have that codified, so the applicant is not able to opt into a two-year renewal program. This is one area the staff is aware we might need to come back to the authority and address any code changes, as well as a couple other items, so that is on our list. Um, I did reach out to the applicant, and they are aware that they will not be able to get a two-year renewal program, simply because it's not codified. Um, we did want to note that the Larimer County Sheriff's Office did conduct an inspection, and the applicant did not have a minor warning sign posted. We did reach out to the applicant, and we provided a morning, a warning sign, along with a copy of the new identification booklet that the D O R put out, just for their information. I did receive confirmation this, um, afternoon that the applicant has that minor warning sign posted now. Staff would recommend approval of this, um, renewal.
Perfect, thank you. Questions from the board? Trustee Moyer.
I do have questions really quick.
Trustee Teets, go for it.
Um, I just wanted to make sure, because I'm noticing here that there was more listed under the license inspection notes. Um, were all of the items found under the inspection? Were all of those corrected? Do we know?
I believe the only one the applicant addressed at the moment was the minor warning sign.
Okay, so where they're storing the alcohol, where they're storing the wine is still in the, did they clarify that that's been moved to where it's supposed to be labeled storage?
Uh, not at this time. I'm happy to work with the sheriff's office and the applicant. Um, if you'd like to approve it on condition of all those items being addressed, we can do that, and I can work with the applicant to get that corrected, according to their diagram.
I would feel comfortable if you guys would feel comfortable with that, just because of the way the alcohol was being stored?
I have no problem with that. Trustee Cannon, any questions?
Question.
Mayor Protim? Um, does the applicant want to present?
Yeah, no. Generally, according as.
Okay. A renewal of sorts? Such, it's a name change.
Very often with renewals, the applicant is not present, especially with these larger corporations, is pretty standard.
Sounds good. Uh, open up for a couple, public comment? No public comment? Okay. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Is there a specific way I have to word the amendment?
Um, as you phrased it earlier, it would be perfectly appropriate, um, move to approve the license, um, subject to the applicant fixing the items identified in the inspection, something like that.
Got it. I move to make a motion to approve Come and Go L C D B A Maverick Fifty-One Fifty Liquor License Renewal with the amendment that the L C S O inspections, items of note, are addressed?
Second.
Further deliberation? No? Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Mayor, the motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item C three?
Ridley's Family Markets Inc. Doing Business As Ridley's Family Markets Retail Liquor Store Renewal.
Thank you. Will you also present on this item, please?
Yes, thank you. Um, the town clerk's office did this renewal notice, excuse me. The applicant is in good standing and does have a valid sales tax license. The sheriff's office did conduct an inspection, which is attached to the packet. We did want to note that the applicant noted that they own the premise, um, however, they do lease the premise, and a letter was submitted, included in your packet, um, to note that they do not own the lease, and the lease is extended for the period of time that your license would be valid for. Um, staff does recommend approval of this renewal.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this item?
It's the same as this last one. I noticed in the liquor license inspection notes, um, it states some beer and wine is kept near the meat cooler in the grocery store. Um, is that labeled as a storage spot?
Thank you, trustee. I, um, will have to look at their diagram, and if you give me a moment, I can pull that up.
That would be awesome.
Any comments from the public on this item? No? Okay.
Uh, so trustee, um, I'm not familiar with this store, and I don't know where the meat and cheese coolers are in relation to where their diagram is, but again, I'd be happy to work with the sheriff's office, um, and the applicant to make sure that it is according to their diagram.
Perfect, then I would do the same and request that the beer and wine storage be put where it needs to be, if it's not there, and I'm willing to approve it.
Do I hear a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve Ridley's Family Markets I N C D B A Ridley's Family Markets Retail Liquor Store Renewal with the amendment that the beer and wine is kept where they label storage at in their diagram.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further deliberation from the board? No. Ms. Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Teets.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a unanimous vote.
I will now close the Liquor License Authority Board and reopen the Board of Trustees Meeting, time being six fifty-six P M. We will start with the Main Street's Annual Report. Ms. Kaitlin Morris, the Main Streets and Event Coordinator, will present on this item.
Evening, board. It's great to see all of you. Um, for our listeners, again, I'm Kaitlin Morris, the Main Street and Events Coordinator for the town. Um, while I get my computer ready, I would love to invite, um, our oncoming, some of our oncoming twenty twenty-five board members to introduce themselves to you. Um, so feel free to come on up. Hello? I don't know how close I'm supposed to get to this. I'm Emma Peyton. Um, I'm really excited to be on the twenty twenty-five board. I've been a volunteer for about the last year, but I've been working super hard. Um, and I've been on two committees. I've been on the Main Street Market Committee and the Design Committee, as well as working on the social media for the Main Street program. So, um, yes, I'm really excited to be here, and I hope to work with all of you soon.
Awesome, thank you.
Emma's also the, this year's Volunteer of the Year for the Main Streets program.
Dance, you're excited.
Hi, I'm Jane Kincaid. Um, I've been local to Wellington for about twenty-seven years, so raised my family and went to all the fun Main Street events many, many times. Um, and I'm excited to be part of giving back now that my kids are all grown, and, um, I run thistle for Kelly in Wellington, and I've been doing that for a couple of years. And, um, I created the mingle on Main, um, and shortly after that, uh, started volunteering for the Main Street program and loving it, so I'm excited to be on board.
Awesome, thank you.
Hi, I'm Melanie Murphy. I've lived here for twenty years. I'm just a serial career volunteer. This is what I do. I'm the president of Wellington Waverly Juarez Club. As you can see, we had a key club party today at the high school, so I'm super, super excited to be involved with that, and I'm just here to help. Thanks for having me involved.
Thank you.
Main Streets Honorable Mention Volunteer of the Year. Also on the Safe Routes to School Board.
Hi, my name's Kate Parton, and I own a company here called The Creative Loft with my husband. We do murals and science, and we moved here about a year ago, and I'm excited to be on the board and to get to know everybody and get to know this town and work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Curtis Smelker. I own Wellington Auction. Curtis Smelker. You turkey. Anyways, uh, I have the auction in town, um, and I'm back on the board. I've served for six years prior, and then I'm back now, so, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back, Curtis.
Thank you all so much for coming and supporting this evening. I'm.
Thank you all so much for coming and supporting this evening. I'm just over the moon to be welcoming seven new board members in 2025. That'll bring us up to nine board members. So got full bench, bench strength moving forward with everything that we have to do. Um, so without further ado, I've got a number of items with you all this evening. So I'm gonna jump right in and go kind of fast and furious. Um, but make time that we have or make sure that we have time for questions as well. So we'll start out with our annual report. And I wanted to begin with a slide that you may often see at the end of these reports, but I think really conveys the bigger picture and the bigger impact of, you know, kind of the, the total collection of the work that we're trying to do and the impact that we're trying to make on the community. Um, so we track a number of different metrics that we report on to the Department of Local Affairs. Um, and just for our own learning to make sure that we're benchmarking ourselves along the way and, um, you know, can kind of check back in on if what we say we want to do is really working. Um, and so I've chosen the ones that I feel like are the most compelling here, but I'll just let you know, there are a number of things that we're tracking. So as we move forward with these reports, if there's anything specific that you'd like to know about that, that we can bring into these, um, reports, I'm more than happy to customize this information for you. Um, so this year, and we're not done yet, but as of December 4th, we had um, a little over 1,500 volunteer hours contributed to the program, um, which is just absolutely incredible, really. It's, um, I think, looked back over the years and it's the highest number of volunteer hours that the program has reported since its inception 10 years ago. So to put that into context, um, that's essentially equivalent to about 70% of a full-time employee. So, I mean, this is a lot of contribution given by our volunteers over the course of the year. Um, in terms of fundraised dollars. Little bit of feedback. Um, so we're at a little over $30,000 that we've fundraised this year in sponsorships and donations and grant dollars. Um, which is, you know, really exceeding our expectations of where we thought we would land sort of when we evaluated things in the middle of the year. Um, we're proud to, um, just embrace the 15 or more partnerships and collaborations with local businesses, nonprofits, organizations that work in the reason, region, that just really help us increase our reach and our impact of the work that we do. This is a, a pillar of Main Street programs that you are really bringing people into the fold of the work that you're doing to advance your impact. Um, the next number is, um, a little tricky to calculate, but I would say that we engaged at least 8,000 people from our 12,000 or so, um, com- community. So this is between programs, events, um, social media engagement. Some people may be counted more than once in here, but this is the total of what we've been able to tally over the course of the year. Um, so, I mean, that's a lot of people in our community. Uh, this year we, uh, saw three vacant properties be sold or leased on our Main Street, which is fantastic to see. After 2023, you all know, we had a lot, a lot of properties go up for sale and businesses closed. So we're starting to see that swing back the other way. Um, recently had two new businesses open on our Main Street and we have four more on the way. One tonight that we just got to celebrate, which is so exciting to see that vacant space on our Main Street be activated again. As you all know, Soul Squared was absolutely a, a gathering area for our community. So this is gonna change things significantly for our downtown culture. Um, and then, uh, lastly, we increased our social media presence and engagement exponentially just in the last quarter alone. I wanna, I included this in the packet, but I want to read some of these statistics. Um, so in terms of unique views of our social media accounts, that increased by 100%. Um, our social media reach to new accounts has increased by 49.5%. Um, content interaction increased by 97%. Um, our story views and interactions has increased by 150%. So things like our trick or treat down Main Street costume contest, at the peak of that, we had about 14,000 people engaged with our content. And that's more than the population of our community. So really wanted to celebrate that, that success of how we can engage with the people in the community as well. So moving into sort of the how we got the work done this year, I wanted to touch on the structure of our program and how that relates to, uh, Main Street America and the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. So, um, we are a nationally accredited organization with Main Street America. We were actually re-accredited earlier this year under Main Street America's new accreditation standards. This is a rigorous survey questionnaire of over, you know, 100 questions that we had to answer um, and score ourselves with how we aligned with the national programs standards. Um, and so we, we did accomplish that and, um, actually scored ourselves a little bit lower than the Department of Local Affairs scored us. So they thought we were doing a little bit better than even we did. Um, and so through the Department of Local Affairs, we're also an exceptional level community. Um, this is formerly known as the graduate level community, but they've changed that terminology. Uh, so for our listeners, that means that we have achieved the highest level, um, of community that we can in the state of Colorado. And Wellington really serves as, um, an example and a leader, I would say, among Main Street communities across the state who are trying to launch their programs or grow them in different ways. Um, I do consult with a lot of programs who are just asking questions about how we did things. So I think that's a pretty cool story to tell about Wellington and how far we've come in the 10 years that this program's been in existence. From there, you all are familiar that we have a memorandum of understanding between the program, the Town of Wellington and the Department of Local Affairs. Um, under the Main Street program umbrella, we have, I think, eight committees now that we organize the work between. So the primary committees, um, that I'll touch on are our leadership team. So that's the, uh, board officers, the president, vice president, treasurer, secretary and myself. Um, moving forward, we will, um, loop in Patty Garcia and Kelly Hodling to those meetings as well. We also have our promotions committee that has five members, our design committee that has five members. Um, the operations and financial sustainability committee, which has been underneath the leadership team, but moving forward, we will carve that out as a separate committee and invite new volunteers to join that. Uh, we have the Main Street Market Committee, Trick or Treat Down Main Street. Um, this year we had our 10-year anniversary celebration committee. And then we also had a, a group of people who worked specifically on historic preservation. So wanted to just give you kind of the picture of how we organize all of that and get it done. Going back to the relationships with Main Street America and the Department of Local Affairs, um, I wanted to explain a little bit more about the, the different resources and support that we get from each of those, those entities in the Town of Wellington included. So through our membership with Main Street America, um, the portal gives us access to just a plethora of different resources, toolkits, handbooks, templates, blog postings. I mean, you name it. There's just so much information, um, that, you know, has been done before. There's just a ton of inspiration in other communities that have already been where we're, we are kind of a thing. So, you know, there's close to 3,000 accredited Main Street communities across the country. So there's a listserv that just gives you access to network to the, with those communities and get access to, um, different things that they have done. So it's, it's an invaluable, um, contribution that we get just being a Main Street program for Wellington. Um, there's the Main Street Now Conference, which is a huge convention annually that I'm required to attend. So I went to Birmingham, Alabama this year. Um, and I just walk away floating the past two years that I've attended this conference because it's, it's just all the things that you need in one place. And I would honestly recommend that if you all were ever able to attend, many elected officials go, different town staff. I mean, a lot of different people are attending this conference. So it's just a great opportunity in general. Um, under the Department of Local Affairs, so this is, this is our external team. So I work very closely with, um, the, the four staff members who manage the Main Street programs under the Department of Local Affairs. Um, we receive scholarship funding. So to be able to attend the Main Street Now Conference and the annual Main Street Managers Summit, which was just recently in October in Ridgeway, Colorado. Um, the technical assistants, so their team is available, seems like night or day, they will answer. But, um, you know, always available to hop on a call and help you work through whatever it is that you have going on. So I meet monthly with Gail Lingley and Tracy Stoffel, um, starting a monthly meeting with, um, Larry, their, their staff architect. Um, this year, our program also, um, used their consulting services. So we were able to have a board retreat with Downtown Colorado Inc., which left us with this great report. Um, that gives us, you know, tips to help develop the board, um, think differently about how we're meeting and build in efficiencies with how we're getting the work done. So it will serve us well over the next couple of years. Uh, we also had a strategic plan and work plan refresh with Matt Ashby with Ayers and Associates, who's been working with our program for, I think, eight years now. Um, so just a breadth of knowledge. And then, uh, as you all know, we had a, a working session with you all with a consultant that was provided through DOLA as well on August 20th. Um, and then the outcome of that was to develop a smaller working group. And so we then moved forward with that. Um, again, with Matt Ashby with Ayers and Associates. So later tonight, I'll report on the outcome of that working group as well. Um, on the Town of Wellington side, through that memorandum of understanding, um, I am, you know, I get to exist under the town umbrella and devote a lot of my time to the Main Street program. Um, we get a considerable amount of support on our community events, um, specifically the road closures and safety aspects of those. Uh, they operate as our, our fiscal agent. So those, that scholarship funding and later tonight, we'll talk about the mini grant funding all gets filtered through the town and they administer that side of things for us. Um, and then generally speaking, just the marketing and promotion of what Main Street is doing. So I spoke earlier about those partnerships and collaborations and I just wanted to provide a snapshot of, again, these are the top 15 that come to mind and I know there's some that I've left out here. I can think of LCSO and the Fire Department as big ones that aren't listed here, but, um, you know, these organizations have helped us to significantly um, increase our impact and the resources available to us to do the work. So, you know, for example, we connected with the CSU College of Business this year, who showed up during our Main Street market to help facilitate our children's entrepreneurial market this year. So they provided the tents, the coordination. They gave guidance to the kiddos on how to grow their businesses and make change and different things like that. Um, so we, you know, we, we really wouldn't have had the capacity to do that otherwise. Um, through the NOCO Ready Partnership, that's a regional economic development group. So, you know, we've been able to really get access to some of the resources through that. I could talk all day about these relationships, but I think they really underscore, um, sort of the ecosystem that Main Street programs can provide. Um, of, you know, being intentional about how we leverage those relationships in the work that we're doing. Um, as you all know, Main Street uses events as a tool to help bring awareness and attention to our Main Street district area to increase foot traffic, to increase, you know, sales tax revenue, we hope during these days. Uh, so we had a number of events this year that I just want to talk, wanted to talk about, um, the outcomes of all of those. Some of our bigger ones were, um, the Wellington Brew Fest and Wine Tasting. So that was our biggest fundraiser of the year. Um, grossing just a little bit over $10,000. Uh, so that was huge for us this year. Uh, our Main Street Market was a little over $8,000 and we had 44 small businesses that we were able to support through those markets. Uh, the market being, we like to refer to it as an incubator and a place where we can welcome small businesses that are trying to get their feet wet. And it's a safe space to do that and learn how to grow and dial in their business model. Uh, so there's a lot of, you know, one-on-one kind of conversations with those businesses as well. Uh, more recently, we had our Trick or Treat Down Main Street event, uh, with about 60 businesses participating in that this year. Um, and at least 3,000 attendees. It was highly successful. You know, may not have been our largest fundraised amount, but that is really just because that road closure piece is a big part of that. But we were still able to bring in some, some great sponsorships through that. Um, I glossed over our 10-year anniversary and park and play. Um, we may or may not continue to do that event. It did serve as a great example of how we can collaborate with the Parks and Rec Department. Uh, the Kiwanis Club, the American Legion was part of that. Our Skate Well, I mean, the list goes on. It was just a very cool event to be able to do with many different partners in the community. And we received a grant for $2,000 from the Bohemian Foundation to have live music all day on that day, which was very cool. I'll go quickly over the next slide. I just wanted to give you a snapshot of some of our promotional materials for all of these events. And getting into the committees and the different work that we've done between all of the committees. So starting out with our design committee, which is really focused on the beautification aspects of downtown, how welcoming and vibrant it feels. Um, and we also, uh, have our historic preservation, uh, work lumped under this committee as well. So through this, you see our annual color program, which right now is our flower planters. So we've got 24 flower planters that we, um, activated for summer, fall and now winter. We brought in about $2,300 in sponsorships for that program this year. And that means an individual planter with a sign with the business that they get to have in there all year round. Uh, this committee facilitated two downtown cleanup days. So Earth Day on April 22nd and National Cleanup Day on September 21st, which was a collaboration with the Town of Wellington. Um, that Earth Day cleanup, we had over 60 volunteers participate in that, which was just a huge showing. This committee also helps facilitate our sign and awning grant program. So we revised and relaunched that grant program this year, um, building in some efficiencies and just streamlined it to make it easier on applicants and the board on making those funding decisions. So we received four applications and we've funded three of those. One of those projects is completed and two are, um, underway right now. So excited to highlight those to the community once they're, they're completed. Um, I mentioned the Historic Preservation Committee. So, um, that was kind of a offshoot of this committee that worked specifically to finalize a guided historic tour that we launched on our 10-year anniversary um, as part of that event. And so that consolidated about 15 historic locations that we have in our downtown area that have been surveyed and that we have significant history on. And we worked with, um, actually Annie Wingren, who's a former executive director of the program and an excellent writer, um, to help create that content and consolidate that into our mobile app and printed materials and website. Um, and lastly, we're finalizing the Byron Myte Family Memorial, which has been, been a project in motion for a few years now, right out here outside of the library. So wanted to provide, provide a picture of that plaque that will be mounted and set hopefully before the end of the year. So we'll do a press release once that's done and let you all know about that as well. Our promotions committee is where our Love Where You Live campaign exists. Uh, so, uh, right now, the Love Where You Live campaign, uh, we have a, a number of different merchandise items um, that serve as a fundraiser, just an ongoing fundraising, um, opportunity for the program. So we've raised roughly 1,800. Things are still selling during this holiday. roughly 1,800. Things are still selling during this holiday season. We've got them listed in the Chambers Holiday Gift Guide and a little bit of a discount going on with those right now. So little plug, if anybody is looking for Christmas gifts, there are Wellies available and the children love them. Under this committee, we have what we call our Front Porch Fridays. And so in 2024, we took this as an opportunity to organize ourselves and develop our approach of how we'll move forward with the promotion of just our downtown businesses. So Front Porch Fridays is about, you know, celebrating local and our small-town feel, what makes Wellington uniquely Wellington. So moving forward, you'll see more of those outcomes in, in our social media and blog posts moving forward. We also facilitate the 100-year building program. So similarly, 2024 was an opportunity to consolidate, organize, and figure out how we'll move forward with promoting the many buildings that we have turning 100 years old in our downtown district. So we'll start promoting those more in 2025. We recently did our Small Business Saturday event where we register with American Express each year as a champion community. So we receive, we received two kits of just promotional materials that we tried to spread out to as many local businesses as possible to just encourage supporting local. That was a collaboration with the Chamber and the town as well. We just launched our Elf Hunt Program, so that goes until Christmas Eve. And that's elves hidden in about eight local business windows to try and encourage people to come downtown, shop around, look into the windows, get familiar with our businesses, find those elves, and they can be entered into a drawing for a gift card for $200. And then lastly, for the Parade of Lights and Wellington's Holiday Magic, this past weekend, we are holding a storefront decorating contest. So we have about nine businesses who entered into that contest. And if you've been downtown at night recently, it is so sparkly and festive and fun. So it's just been a a great easy thing that we can do to get the businesses involved. Otherwise, this committee is responsible for so many of the, the graphic design of our promotional materials, of getting that out on social media through local channels like NOCO Style, The Coloradoan, social media influencers. We've really tried to increase our marketing and promotions reach this year to just bring more attention and awareness to what's happening in Wellington. That Organization and Financial Sustainability Committee, I mentioned already, we are responsible for accrediting the program. And now that we have achieved that accreditation with the updated standards, that will be an annual expectation. So we'll do that each and every year. This committee also developed a draft of what we're calling our Friends of the Program model. So we have some more work to do on this, but you know, really, the goal of, of this program is to find ways that we can incorporate the entire community into the work that we're doing. So, you know, Main Street, we really see ourselves as the heart of the community with that strong heartbeat. And we want to send lifeblood, you know, out to the, the rest of the community with the work that we're doing. So intentionally incorporating opportunities like Trick or Treat Down Main Street, where we welcome all businesses to participate. We are more than happy to always promote work and things that are going on for other businesses. Just really having that reciprocity and open door of letting that evolve, how the work evolves and, and getting the entire community involved in it. So you'll hear more about that in 2025. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that is necessary and happens that we don't necessarily talk about. So this committee is responsible for overseeing the project management lifecycle of everything that we do, the operational aspects of making sure that our financials are completed, that we're reporting quarterly to DOLA. Just those sort of, you know, day-to-day business activities that need to exist. I have been working on a policy manual for probably over a year now, slowly just putting this together. And I, I now have a draft that moving forward, I'll start presenting each section of that to the new board for approval and adoption. So this, I think, will really help build in some efficiencies and shared, you know, collective knowledge of how we need to operate this program for the foreseeable future. So this is meant to be a resource that can live on with the program and grow and adapt as things need to change, but really serve as that solid record that we can refer back to. Again, we are responsible for the fundraising, so we brought in, you know, a little over that $30,000 this year. So that's developing sponsorship packages, that's reaching out to potential donors, that's applying for grants. You know, working on ticket sales for events that, that may have that incorporated in it, trying to diversify our revenue streams and create multiple opportunities for bringing in income into the program. And then lastly, you know, Main Street programs are community-driven, volunteer-driven programs. So it's, you know, become essential to make sure that we have a plan for that and that we're being thoughtful about how we're succession planning for the board, for our committees, which really serve as a pipeline to those board positions. So trying to build a model where we can meet people where they're at, with how much time do you have to devote? What's your background and skillset? What do you really want to be part of? And creating opportunities for people based on that. New things in 2024, so the Cleveland Avenue Construction Project formally launched. And, you know, exciting project for our Main Street district area, obviously. So just excited to see that kick off and lift off and had a town hall meeting that the, the town hosted on May 21st that, you know, really was the first time that the community was able to see some of the plans and direction for the project. More recently, had an open house for business owners specifically to discuss their concerns and specific questions about the program. And so in the meantime, we have synced up with the Chamber and the town to form a steering committee or task force. We're not sure what we'll call it yet. But that has representatives from each of those entities that will be focused specifically on supporting the businesses, communicating with the businesses throughout this project. So we'll meet early January to sort of formalize that. Right now, we're looking for members to join it. So we're in kind of that recruitment process right now. We did launch a mobile app in 2024. At the time was called Districts. They've now updated. It's called Locable. This is a free resource with us being a Main Street community, so it's free to us. There are certain aspects of it that we do need to invest in. So the board did choose to invest in building out the historic tours in it. And there are other things like that that we can do. And as we have more surveys done on our historic buildings, we will add that information to that guided tour as we have it. We are working on sort of a management plan for this mobile app because it's, it's a whole thing all in itself. And so we are, you know, looking for people who have that skillset to just own the app, manage it, and make sure that we have as many businesses added in there as we can, the events, you know, all that pertinent information. Somehow, Welly the Wooly Mammoth didn't show up tonight. I'm surprised, but Welly has just been a treasure. Welly has, I think, just infused a lot of joy and whimsy into our community. The kiddos love him and, you know, he's part of our historic story. So that's just been fun and he's in high demand. So he's now being scheduled out. If, if you're wondering if he's available, check in first. And then I've already mentioned the Friends of the Program. So that's a high-level overview. That brings me to the end here. For our listeners, I do just want to let you know that you can visit our website for more information, follow us on Facebook or Instagram, or contact us directly via that, that email or phone number there. And with that, I will pause and ask if there's any questions.
Thank you. Trust Moore?
No questions. Your social media metrics are very impressive. So congratulations on that and congratulations to all the board members, the new ones out there. Thank you for your service. I'm excited to see what you all do. Obviously, this is an asset to the community, so appreciate all you do.
Thank you. Trustee Teets?
No, I just have comments.
Truste Wigan?
No question, just some comments.
I mean, that would be the time.
Okay, perfect. Well, first off,
I'll bring it back.
Okay. With the Cleveland project going on, we definitely need a lot of support from all the businesses here in town. I'm glad that you guys are reaching out to the other businesses in the Friends Program. So I know we had discussed that shoot, I think, at the, the last MOU. So I'm glad to see that's happening right now. And are you guys looking at, or do you work with the Chamber? Just really curious about that. I mean, right now, that's so critical. And, you know, whether we're supporting the Chamber, whether we're supporting the Main Street businesses, it's all in conjunction with supporting Wellington. So we need to work as a community. So appreciate it.
Thank you. Bringing back to you, Trustee Teets.
I guess I do have a question now that that was brought up. Have you guys renewed your MOU with the Chamber of Commerce?
We have not. So I'm, I love that you know that that exists. And yes, we have dusted that off and we have looked at it together. Essentially, it's, it's, it's really still in effect. There was no deadline put on that agreement. But I think where we're at now is we've, we've just talked about having more intentional conversations about kind of the nuts and bolts of, of how that works. So from the Main Street perspective, we have alignment with the Chamber in economic vitality and in our promotions efforts, among other things. But those are just very clear alignments where we can start to move work forward. So I have met, you know, with the previous executive director and current executive director about what that can look like. And I think there's some conversations on the horizon that we're excited to have, to really formalize that and you know, update the agreement or whatever that looks like. So, yeah.
Okay, so it's still active. It never had a deadline date for cutoff?
No, yeah. So it's, you know, essentially still in effect. But again, I think putting that, that detail and intentionality behind how we really want that to, to look and work.
Awesome. So my, my comments now is I appreciate you guys putting the additional work planned together. I know that was a discussion that was super important. Just making sure that you're narrowing the scope to make sure you're providing the right amount of hours for the events that actually bring in the crowds that don't take up a very large amount of time. So I'm grateful that you guys looked at that. Still concerned, you have a lot on your plate. I'd like to see the volunteers step up a lot more. Caitlin has pretty much shouldered this for the last year. And I know that you've tried, know that you've tried. So it's extremely important to iterate that 501(c)(3) is our volunteer organization with support from the town. So I just, I'm hoping that you have a board with you and some of the people I see sitting here. I've already actually got to meet some of them when we were decorating in downtown. I think you, you have a pretty strong board here that's going to be more active and really support you guys and the businesses in downtown like you want to see. So I think my concerns were addressed. I was worried because in the initial agreement when we first approved this continuing MOU, it was that you, you're going to do 50/50 with the community and business and then Main Streets. I like that it's project-based now because then it kind of dictates where that time gets allotted to. I'm more confident that we are looking to add business and community employee to the building and planning department. So I'm excited that we're going to get some additional business support. Not that I don't want to see Main Street supported, but we have a lot of businesses in this community struggling right now. So I'd love to see them get some of the love as well. Other than that, I don't have anything else. It's just, was concerning when I saw your name here so many times.
Perfect. Thank you. Truste Kinnon?
Thank you. You know, 10 years ago, when Wendy DeBoer worked with the town to create this new thing called Main Street and everyone was scratching their heads thinking, what's this all going to be about? I just want to say congratulations for the past 10 years for everything that Main Street has done. You know, Main Street is such a powerful tool for a community, for helping build in communities, supporting the community, bringing that sense of community to our downtown and, and bringing people into our downtown and raising awareness and supporting local businesses. It's actually wonderful. I was going through and looking at your accomplishments and all the volunteering hours and how much money you've raised and your national accreditation. And, you know, it's like you've reached a pinnacle, but don't stop. Just keep, keep going. I was at a Chamber of Commerce board meeting this morning, and they are excited to be working with Main Street as well. Especially when they start looking at the Cleveland Avenue Construction Project. They're looking forward to that January meeting. And, and I, they want to get ahead, just like you do and just like the town does, get ahead of this and just kind of give the support to those downtown businesses that might be impacted by, by the construction project. The only question I had is, is, is is your website up to date? You know, it's going there, it's hard to find some information sometimes. So that, that'd be the only question I would have is, is, let's, let's, let's work on that a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Truste Daly?
I'm, I love the Wellington Main Street Program. And, and I am a complete supporter of everything that you do. I'm continuously impressed by just the dedication, commitment to our entire town. A town that has a thriving downtown is a better town all around. That sounded like I was rapping. I'm a rhymer. Sounded like I was rhyming. I'm a rapper. Okay. But the Love Where You Live campaign, even every time I hear it now, gives me chills because that is the answer to 99% of the problems that our town will ever face is how people treat each other. They love each other. They're proud of their town. They take care of their town. They take care of their people. And then through that, spend their money here too. So the Love Where You Live campaign is the epitome of everything that everybody should and want to be doing for the town of Wellington. You guys are representing that and sending that and sharing that, that joy to everyone. So it's amazing. I was honored to get to participate and, and attend the Byron White Family Memorial ribbon cutting. And I know that does a lot of work on behalf of Carter, but supported by the Main Streets Program as part of our Historic Preservation and the celebration that you guys were able to provide for him. And the announcement was that he's able to become an Eagle Scout as a, as a result of that project. And that's just one example of many of the strategic partners where there is not one group in town that would be like, I'll work with Main Street Program. They flock and love it, and then they volunteer on behalf of the Wellington Main Street Program at every single event. You'll see Legion guys there every time, Kiwanis there every single time, and, and Chamber folks there every single time. And it's just beautiful to see everybody working together and the coordination the Main Street Program does to that. Not to mention the huge volunteer hours and how much everyone volunteers for this wonderful organization. So much volunteering, not just from the board, but from people across the town. I did get an opportunity to talk to DOLA representatives, Department of Local Affairs. And they, the accolades that they gave during my conversations with them told me something I already knew, but a Wellington Main Street program is really special and does an extremely good job of what they do. So it was cool to hear that because they're the professionals. They're the ones who drive these programs and run these programs. And they said Wellington has it. So that was really cool to hear. Regarding our comprehensive plan and how you guys fit into our town, I always have to bring this up because this is, this is the 20-year vision of our town and where they want to be. The top three things are thriving community, community cohesion, gathering, being together, having places to do that. And then one of them specifically of the four says vibrant and historic down. And then one of them specifically of the four says vibrant and historic downtown. We promote downtown's vibrancy and history by preserving its distinctive charm, supporting its local flair and enhancing its atmosphere and amenities for residents and visitors to create memorable experiences in the heart of our town. This is the vision and theme and view of people that they said want to be the priority of our town in 20 to 40 years. And you guys are making that happen now and building for that now. So it is essential that you're here and it is so wonderful, the work that you give into it. The other thing I want to also commend you all for is I know you have seven new board members this year, which is so exciting, but let's not pretend like those seven new people came out of nowhere. The, the experience and tenure and volunteer of this board that you have in front of you right now will surpass everybody on this board from any commitment they've provided in years that they've provided to our town. These are expert experience and, and they have so much information and love for our town. And I think that's wonderful. So they may be new to the board, but by no means are they new to Wellington or no means are they, by no means are they new to the Wellington Main Street Program. They've been on committees, they've already been volunteers and already committed to this group. So if anything, you guys maybe have the best ramp plan of volunteers I've ever seen because you guys have so many committees with so many volunteers and they're all just waiting to participate more. And I'm really excited to get to talk about the work plan in a little bit because everything aligns with everything that we're trying to do here. So I'm happy to talk about that. And so they've acknowledged it, but this group is truly exceptional. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Oren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Morris, really appreciate all the excellent work that you've done on this. Very excited to see the work plan here coming up shortly. But I just wanted to give a big shout out and thank you to all of our Main Streets volunteers. Really, this program would not be successful without our volunteers. So special thanks to the Kiwanis Club as well as the American Legion. Maybe a special shout out to Welly the Mammoth. I think he's here tonight. And really, you know, I just want to say the, the events that you guys put on as far as Brew Fest, you know, Trick or Treat Down Main Street, 3,000 attendees for Trick or Treat Down Main Street. I mean, that's just absolutely amazing. So I mean, what you guys are giving back to the community is absolutely unforgettable experiences. So look forward to continuation of the Color Program. The Sign and Honing Grants have been tremendously successful. I mean, especially what's been done with the T-Bar, a lot of those types of, I mean, holy smokes. I mean, you guys have done a great job in improving the look and feel downtown. And I'm very excited to hear about the continuation of collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce. It sounds like that's going to be ramping up a little bit, so very excited to hear about that. And then finally, just a special thanks to the new board members that you guys have. Obviously, you know, Trustee Wigan and Trustee Cannon both touched on the Cleveland Construction Project. And certainly having Curtis on, on the board is going to be, I think, critical for that, especially operating a business right there on Main Street. He's come up and voiced some of his concerns as far as that project goes to the board before. So just want people to know that, you know, we're here to listen to those ideas and we want to get those things taken care of. And I think it'll be great to have him there as well to help you guys guide that program and that committee. And one final thing, really excited to hear more about the policy manual as that, as far as that comes up. Certainly, obviously, leadership and direction is critical for these types of things and the sustainability of the program going forward. So very excited to hear about that going forward. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, Main Streets has, has done a lot of things. I know there's been some ups and downs with leadership change and things of that nature. And you guys have really started to turn a new leaf to get the Main Streets Program back to where it should be. I'd like to see the new board members. Volunteers are huge. Caitlin, you've done a great job working with them. So, I mean, just keep it up and don't stop fighting, don't stop pushing to do things great for this Main Streets Program, for the town, for working with people outside, the Main Streets Friends. And I would love to see that policy draft. Very good. I think that's, that is vital. That's one of the things that I do for my company is make policies and procedures. And when you're growing, they're, they're needed. So I'm glad that that's happening. That's all that I have looking forward to the next section.
Thank you.
Onto that, the work plan, which Ms. Caitlin Morris will present on as well.
All right, there we go. Sorry for that wait there. Oh, and I apologize.
Maybe you can have the board reintroduce themselves while you bring us.
Yeah, I should have. I didn't plan for that. This is all operator error, so not embarrassed at all. All right, this is the right one here. All right. So I'm not going to talk as much as I did during this last presentation. There is a ton of information here and I know you all have it in your packets. And for our listeners, if you're looking for the detail, it's in there. But I did just want to kind of provide, you know, the high-level overview of, of how we got to today and, and how we're moving forward. So I mentioned that we did work with Matt Ashby from Ayres and Associates for the past two years now, actually. He created the version of the current strategic plan that we have. And prior to these sessions with Matt, myself and the board reviewed the town's comprehensive plan, the town's strategic plan at the time, in, in addition to the prior board's, you know, sort of list of goals and direction that they wanted to go as well. And so really tried to develop a work plan and strategic plan that was in alignment with all of those things. And so as you all know, we met on August 20th, had a working session between the Main Street Board and the Board of Trustees to, you know, discuss how things were going and how we're working together. And the outcomes of that meeting were an expectation of increased communication via quarterly reports at your trustee meetings. So we've got those scheduled out already in 2025. And, and by the way, I, I really look for your feedback on how you want those reports to go and the type of information you really want to know. I'm more than happy to customize those to make sure that they're effective. The other outcome was to form a smaller working group with two representatives from the trustees, which were Trustee Daly and Trustee Teets, two representatives from the Main Street Board, which were Blair Peterson and Sophia Moore. And so we met together as a group to discuss kind of the outcomes of this meeting and how to move forward. And the outcomes of that meeting were to demonstrate the alignment between the Main Street Program Strategic Plan and the Town Strategic Plan and to develop a quarterly work plan that conveys more of the work that's happening each quarter and incorporates that alignment as well. So today is really just to respond to those requests and show you sort of where we've come with those efforts. So this is the first page of our strategic plan, which is largely the same aside from the icon in the bottom lower-left corner you all recognize as the Town Strategic Plan. So it felt like it fit nicely with the flow of information there where we, you know, talk about the Main Streets connection with the town and our ability to sort of champion local government and connect people with local government, you know, with the intent to focus on effective, community-focused solutions that support downtown. So as we move on to the second page here, this is where we get more clarity on the types of projects and tasks that we hope to accomplish that are in line, in alignment with our strategic plan. So in the bottom left-hand corner here, you'll notice we've added icons that show the alignment with the town's strategic plan. So as we go through these different items on each of our strategies, Wellington's Front Porch, Keep Cleveland Happening and Shoulder to Shoulder, I worked closely with Matt Ashby to identify and showcase where those alignments exist. And, you know, I'm just proud to report that really everything that we're planning on doing does align with the town's mission, vision and strategic plan. Before we head into the work plan, for our listeners and anybody who has questions, I wanted to touch on sort of our, our project management lifecycle that we've incorporated into how we manage the work. When I, I heard the request of developing a quarterly work plan, I thought that's going to be pretty detailed and intensive. And I may not know all of those answers at this time, but I know at a high level, what phase of the life cycle the project's going to be in. So I thought that that would be, you know, the, the most efficient way to share that information. And so as you go through the quarters, you'll see that I've sort of assigned a phase to each of the projects based on what's happening in that quarter. So the definition phase is where we're really honing in on the what and the why of what we're doing. So we're clarifying our goals, we're identifying the scope, the resources that are needed, the roles and responsibilities, the budget, the schedule. In the design phase, we're adding detail to that. How are we going to accomplish it? Who do we need to accomplish it with? The due phase, we're executing, we're, we're doing the thing. And then we always debrief, we always come back and evaluate our outcomes and, and compare those to the goals and metrics that we set out to accomplish. So just wanted to sort of provide that background. And then you'll see these icons have been incorporated into that quarterly work plan as well. In the packet, there's the quarterly work plan and then the work plan by strategy and metrics of success. Wanted to be able to provide that information to all of you as well. So in quarter one, we are largely making the plans. We are in the define phase. So everything is really ramping up in quarter one. That's essentially, you know, most of the work that we're doing. We're, we're on, we're going to be onboarding the board. We're going to be aligning each board member with their role and responsibility, you know, completing job descriptions and looking at sort of the matrix of the support that we have and where we have gaps and we, we need to leverage collaborations or partners or different resources to fill in whatever we don't have the capacity to be able to do. In quarter two, a lot of these things are coming due. So we're really entering into the, the execute phase on a lot of these projects. I will say some of these things don't necessarily have a finite life cycle. Some of these things are just operating non-stop, right? Like our Sign and Honing Grant Program. But maybe we're building out different aspects of it or developing it in a different way. So Q2, we really, you know, start to ramp up those efforts and put things into the due phase. Same with quarter three. Quarter three's, while it may not look like a big list here, quarter three is probably our busiest time of the year. And then quarter four, we really start to round that corner of we're completing things. We're debriefing, we're reflecting, we're benchmarking our success and thinking about how we're going to do it differently next year. So I should, I should have mentioned before I, I went into this, this work plan at this time doesn't include the mini-grant projects necessarily that we will be discussing later on this evening. So, you know, the work plan is meant to be iterative and to evolve as the work evolves. So there'll be lots of different versions of this. And I'll, I'll plan to bring this back to all of those quarterly reports. So, you know, I hope to be able to update this even yet tonight after you all discuss the, the mini-grant proposal. And we'll build that into here as well. So that's as much as I thought I would really cover. Just again, knowing that the details in your packet and it is a lot to cover. So I'll, I'll pause and open it up for discussion and feedback, please.
Thank you. Trustee Teets?
I don't have any questions per se. I am, when I saw it come through to me, I was extremely impressed. And then had it explained to me that we were kind of assigning you the 40 hours a week for kind of events and Main Street and then found out about the additional employees. So I was less worried. But this is exactly kind of what we asked you guys to accomplish when we were in our meeting. And I think that they've done that very, very impressive. So I'm looking forward to seeing how much change actually comes about with the organization being able to be more streamlined.
Thank you. Trustee Moore?
I don't have any questions necessarily, but I'm excited about a lot of the different things that I see in the strategic plan. And I do appreciate the icons referring back to our board strategic plan. It makes it very easy for you to look at, for anyone to look at and see how we do align as organizations, particularly the Placer AI. I'm very excited to see come to fruition. I think that could be really cool and an awesome tool for the town to use. So I'm excited to see a lot of the things happen. So let's get through that planning stage and into implementation. Implementation, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon?
Thank you. This is a very good work plan. I'm glad you broke it down into quarters. I'm glad, I like the format, I like everything. I like the icons as well that they show the alignment between the town's vision and mission and strategic plan and Main Streets as well. One of the things that I've always wanted to see is, is better collaboration between Main Street and the town, between Main Street and the Chamber, between Main Street and businesses and so forth like that. Because in the past, that's been missing. And it's great to see this in this format and showing how that alignment is. It's, it's never been about, you know, anybody trying to tell Main Street what to do, but just making sure that, that, that we're not going in two different directions. And I'm glad to see that we're working in the same direction. You've got tools and resources and you've got a great new board there. And I applaud every single one of you. You've got some great tools and resources that the town doesn't have access to. But we've also got resources that Main Street isn't access to. And that collaboration is ways we can get things done in our town and so that business prosper and, and our residents enjoy this vibrant community that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Wigan?
Thank you for your presentation. I love seeing the structure that you're showing here. Before, you know, I didn't know exactly how you guys were working or how things were actually coming together, but this really lays it out well. And it gives us a roadmap and gives you guys a roadmap. And I think you can accomplish a whole bunch. And just like Trustee Cannon says, the collaboration with the rest of the town, that, that's part of it. Fantastic. So, you know, we are a community and let's do it as a community. So appreciate, and appreciate all the new board members. You guys will be great. So thanks again.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Daly?
I had the opportunity to see, I know.
We, we have a work order in to fix that.
Do I have this? I usually have the squeaky chair too. At least I took the squeaky chair from you. Oh, that's why yours is not moving. Usually I get squeaky chair in this. I had, I had the privilege of seeing the work plan prior to it being, you know, summarized and kind of headlined. And so the question of whether or not there are, it's broken down to very minute tasks and, and assignments and jobs, there's no question there. That, that is all within the process. And I'm glad that we're not seeing that view because it really is more important to see overall the, the actions and what's happening, not dive into the details. We're not micromanaging. We just want to make sure that we're aligning with what Main Street's doing. During the presentation, which I think you guys are so fortunate to have the dollars to go for consulting dollars because each one of these activities where you guys are putting these together are led by professional consultants who are familiar with our town, eight years of the Wellington Main Street Program alone and, and everything involved, the history that they have and the, and what they provide to that process is invaluable. So I think that's fantastic. It's nice to see two different programs evolving to the exact same points, even though you may not have had our language of our strategic plan at the time when you first were first doing this activity. They're still, they were still the exact same things and still aligning. There's not one thing I've ever heard from the Main Street program that's contradictory towards the vision and view of what this board is trying to do through our comprehensive attempts to try to create a plan that serves our community the best. So I love that you've outlined it in this way. I have no doubt whatsoever that all your actions and plans are aligned with the town of Wellington. I know that you guys are beefing up your strategic partnerships, which our board has a goal of doing as well. So we can maximize our efforts and dollars whenever possible with just coordinate more coordination. So I'm really excited for those opportunities and just let me know how I can help. I'm so privileged to get to participate with this board as your liaison and I wouldn't trade it for anything. So thank you guys for having me.
Thank you. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Morris, this is, this is one of the most complete work plans I think I've seen in the last three years that I've been up here. I mean, it's just incredible that you've lined all of these pieces out with every portion of this board's strategic plan. And I'm sure that took a lot of work on your behalf, your board's behalf and all the subcommittees and the working group as far as that goes. So really appreciate how this is lined out. It's very clear for residents to be able to see exactly where that fits with the town's plans going forward. Really, as far as the feedback and discussion items go, really, I think Trustee Cannon hit the nail on the head. As far as what I would like to see, just as far as that collaboration with the chamber going forward and getting that relationship to where it needs to be, I think that's going to be really good stuff as far as alignment there. I'm totally fine with quarterly reports. I think as far as my feedback there, really just, you know, continue to highlight on your successes and what you guys have done and completed these types of things. And of course, if you have any needs or wants or concerns that you have for the board, certainly feel free to bring those to us. We'll, you know, we'll do what we can to address those. So other than that, really just want to say great job and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I like, I like how this is set up. And one thing that is huge for me personally is that it's measurable. Like we'll be able to see through these quarterly reports at the end of the year, which of these were able to be completed and things of that nature, which is huge to know really the health of the Main Street program and the successes that are being accomplished. So I really enjoy that. This is easy to read, easy to understand, you know, parodying what everybody else said. I like that we can see where it aligns with our strategic plan that we as the board here put on. And yes, I am completely fine with quarterly reports. The collaboration side of things with the chamber, I think, is going to be huge. We win together, we lose together. And I think as long as all the organizations have the same mindset of helping the town achieve where we want to go, they can work together more effectively than they can maybe going off on different rabbit trails. So that's going to be really big. And then working, you know, with the pro or the project that'll be coming down Main Street over the summer, that'll, getting that set up in January is going to be huge, get ahead of it. So I do appreciate this and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll be back in a little bit.
Thank you. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for the items on the consent agenda?
November 12th, 2024 meeting minutes and November 19th, 2024 meeting minutes.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll say it.
Ms. Clerk, make it a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosi?
Yes.
Mayor, the vote was unanimous.
Thank you. We will take a five-minute recess and come back. We'll make a 10, just to be safe.
I usually have the squeaky chair too. At least I took the squeaky chair from you. Oh, that's why yours is not moving. Usually I get squeaky chair in that. I had, I had the privilege of seeing the work plan prior to it being, you know, summarized and kind of headlined. And so the question of whether or not there are, it's broken down to very minute tasks and assignments and jobs, there's no question there. That is all within the process. And I'm glad that we're not seeing that view because it really is more important us to see overall the actions and what's happening, not dive into the details, we're not micromanaging. We just want to make sure that we're aligning with what Main Street's doing. During the presentation, which I think you guys are so fortunate to have the dollars to go for consulting dollars because each one of these activities where you guys are putting these together are led by professional consultants who are familiar with our town, eight years of the Wellington Main Street program alone and everything involved, the history that they have and what they provide to that process is invaluable. So I think that's fantastic. It's nice to see two different programs evolving to the exact same points, even though you may not have had our language of our strategic plan at the time when you first were first doing this activity. They're still, they were still the exact same things and still aligning. There's not one thing I've ever heard from the Main Street program that's contradictory towards the vision and view of what this board is trying to do through our comprehensive attempts to try to create a plan that serves our community the best. So I love that you've outlined it in this way. I have no doubt whatsoever that all your actions and plans are aligned with the town of Wellington. I know that you guys are beefing up your strategic partnerships, which our board has a goal of doing as well. So we can maximize our efforts and dollars whenever possible with just coordinate more coordination. So I'm really excited for those opportunities and just let me know how I can help. I'm so privileged to get to participate with this board as your liaison and I wouldn't trade it for anything. So thank you guys for having me.
Thank you. Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Morris, this is, this is one of the most complete work plans I think I've seen in the last three years that I've been up here. I mean, it's just incredible that you've lined all of these pieces out with every portion of this board's strategic plan. And I'm sure that took a lot of work on your behalf, your board's behalf and all the subcommittees and the working group as far as that goes. So really appreciate how this is lined out. It's very clear for residents to be able to see exactly where that fits with the town's plans going forward. Really, as far as the feedback and discussion items go, really, I think Trustee Cannon hit the nail on the head. As far as what I would like to see, just as far as that collaboration with the chamber going forward and getting that relationship to where it needs to be, I think that's going to be really good stuff as far as alignment there. I'm totally fine with quarterly reports. I think as far as my feedback there, really just, you know, continue to highlight on your successes and what you guys have done and completed these types of things. And of course, if you have any needs or wants or concerns that you have for the board, certainly feel free to bring those to us. We'll, you know, we'll do what we can to address those. So other than that, really just want to say great job and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I like, I like how this is set up. And one thing that is huge for me personally is that it's measurable. Like we'll be able to see through these quarterly reports at the end of the year, which of these were able to be completed and things of that nature, which is huge to know really the health of the Main Street program and the successes that are being accomplished. So I really enjoy that. This is easy to read, easy to understand, you know, parodying what everybody else said. I like that we can see where it aligns with our strategic plan that we as the board here put on. And yes, I am completely fine with quarterly reports. The collaboration side of things with the chamber, I think, is going to be huge. We win together, we lose together. And I think as long as all the organizations have the same mindset of helping the town achieve where we want to go, they can work together more effectively than they can maybe going off on different rabbit trails. So that's going to be really big. And then working, you know, with the project that'll be coming down Main Street over the summer, that'll, getting that set up in January is going to be huge, get ahead of it. So I do appreciate this and thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll be back in a little bit.
Thank you for your permission.
I love the creativity of using the and leveraging the funds from the Main Street design project. I think that it's a fantastic way to utilize what we are already spending to uplift another program. And so I applaud that, nothing coming out of pocket for us and excited to see these projects come to fruition.
Thank you. Trustee Teetz.
Thank you for answering my questions via email earlier. I think this is one of those pillar opportunities when you talk about the directional signage for downtown. If that is one of those collaborations where you can also have additional funding from the chamber that assists and if you're going to have that directional signage where it points where you're going downtown, that it also points to other areas of town where there's additional businesses. So that might be one of those things that you can kind of plug in there or partner with the chamber on. I know when you go to Estes Park, If that is one of those collaborations where you can also have additional funding from the chamber that assists, and if you're going to have that directional signage where it points where you're going downtown, that it also points to other areas of town where there's additional businesses. So that might be one of those things that you can kind of plug in there or partner with the chamber on. Um, I know when you go to Estes Park, there are signs that say, these businesses this way and these businesses this way. So that might be an awesome opportunity to open up and put a foot in the door with that collaboration and possibly them invest in this as well. But other than that, nope, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Trust Wegan?
Ditto on what's been said already. Uh, I was in Saltila, Mississippi. This, uh, two weekends ago, and they were a Main Street program also, but they had actually signage for that. So that was pretty cool, and, uh, I'd love to see the direction. I mean, pretty much any old town or any town has directional signings through their old sections and historic sections. So I'm glad to see us finally doing it. So fantastic.
Sure. Trust Ken?
Thank you, and, um, thanks for all you're doing there. Okay. You know, from my experience, when, when communities do wayfinding and community branding, uh, all of these elements kind of fit together with, with the signage within town, you know, that points people different directions and so forth. And I know we have not had a, any, any branding of our town probably in the past six years since we changed our logo from that. But I do like Main Street's logo. I like the color schemes. I like, I like our color schemes for our strategic plan and for the town as well. And so any kind of wayfinding signs, and I'm, I'm not sure, twenty-five or, excuse me, ten thousand dollars would be enough for, excuse me, five thousand dollars won't do a whole lot for, for wayfinding for businesses outside of, you know, directing people downtown. So, um, maybe it's sometime in the future, that's something that the town might want to consider doing is, is some wayfinding initiatives with our partners so that everything's kind of meshed together. And all the colors, they all match, and, and, and the signage and the locations and so forth. But I'm, I'm excited about your, the mini grant opportunity here.
Thank you, sir. Trust Daily?
Maybe there'll be opportunities for more wayfinding through a park's master plan. Okay, so I, this is already an example of amazing strategic partnership of stacking dollars on dollars to make bigger impact. So I love seeing this. Um, I wanna compliment you guys on being so flexible, um, and being able to pivot. I know this year is gonna be challenging with opportunities full of that, but you've already experienced that coming up with these plans for, for these grant dollars. So we had ideas, maybe didn't work out, weren't feasible, got other great ideas, maybe came up with the best plan yet now. So, um, I saw a similar marketing campaign occur in Windsor by the Downtown Alliance. And, um, this was years ago at this point, but the content that they have, they still utilize in marketing. And not only that, but every individual business has lifestyle magazine style, beautiful photos of people enjoying their businesses that you really wouldn't see without, um, very professional and targeted type professionals working on it. So I am so excited for this opportunity. I think twenty-five thousand dollars is just gonna get you started in those efforts, considering how many businesses would be able to participate. So I'm curious if, you know, this is gonna be a wonderful model that we could grow on as a town, um, and, and just boost everybody in this way. So I lo, I can't wait to see how it goes, what your results are, and to see how we can then again strategically multiply those efforts. So, um, I, I love seeing everything that you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Porten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Ms. Morris, really appreciate all the work that's gone into, uh, you know, submitting that grant application and getting those funds awarded. Uh, grants are obviously pretty essential to, uh, these types of programs. So congratulations on getting that back. Um, I think the only question I had was there had, I think, been some discussion a little while back about using part of the mini grant funds to assist with paving the alleyways. It seems like that's not included in here. I was just curious, did we, I don't remember where we left off with that, or whether there was a plan to potentially fund that out of the Streets Fund. But I, I guess I would say, I, I would consider that should probably be a fairly important thing as we move forward with the, uh, Cleveland Avenue Project. So I just, I wasn't sure where we ended up with that.
That was exactly one of those items I was complimenting regarding pivoting and feasibility. That's kind of a nutshell, but maybe there's more details, but that's kind of why I had to change.
Okay, yeah, so, um, that, that was a direction that we were looking to go with these funds and, and to partner with the town, knowing that the alleyways will need to be much more accessible, you know, for the future, but definitely through the Cleveland Avenue Construction Project. And so, um, had, uh, you know, coordinated with our, our Public Works Department and, um, ultimately just found that, you know, with, with the results of surveys and, and looking at, at what was really needed to be able to do that, even with just a small section of alleyway, you know, we were focusing on between second and third, that alleyway that leads, uh, to our, our only downtown parking lot. Um, you know, the funds required and, and work required and civil engineering that's needed to do that is just exponentially more than what we were able to contribute between the Streets Fund and these funds. So we know that we will still improve, will work towards improving the alleyways in different ways. The full paving won't be right now, but I think it's exciting to know that we've started those conversations. Um, so that in two years, three years, you know, hopefully sooner than that, um, we can be able to have a more comprehensive, um, renovation of our alleyways. So not right now, but hopefully very soon down the pipeline.
Sure, I appreciate that answer. I, I, I guess the only question I might have for the board, uh, maybe just going forward is, uh, maybe potentially considering reapproach appropriation of some funding somewhere to, uh, maybe consider moving that up a little bit, see if we can get those alleyways paved. If we can't make it, we can't make it, but I, I think that would be a pretty critical improvement. So just throwing that idea out there.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think that's worth, I, I think it'd be looking into, but I don't, I mean, that's, that's a major undertaking.
Do we have a cost estimate?
We'd have to have it, we'd have to have civil engineer come out, check out everything. There'd probably be a relocation of utilities, things that are run through the alleys, um, then drainage, all that encompassing. So it, it would be a massive undertaking. Um, but glad it's on the radar.
Mayor, if I may?
Go by all means.
I didn't want to interrupt your time there, but I appreciate what you're saying about, about the alleyways. And I think it's important that we do eventually develop those alleyways. I know how much the construction costs, and, and it will be significant. Uh, and I think I've brought this up before. It's a suggestion is, is maybe instead of just jumping into one project that's only a block long, that maybe we, there's no funds in it for twenty twenty-five, but twenty twenty-six might be a time that you have a downtown master plan that describes how the alleys will be developed, how, uh, businesses where parking will be, uh, the expansion, you know, and growth of, of our downtown. That'd be a good starting point, and then you build off of that with a capital plan for the alleys, for the parking, for other things, sir. Thank you for that time.
Hit the nail on the head there. Um, with this, I think it's, it's wonderful. Um, a great way to be able to get our matching funds to make it beneficial for us. It's not really taking money out of anywhere else. Um, great utilization to be able to get forty thousand dollars total. Um, yeah, I think having the markers is huge. One thing down the road, which I think would be really cool, you see a lot in California along the one oh one, is an arch sign that says, you know, welcome to downtown Wellington, historic Wellington, something of that nature. Um, I've always really enjoyed those. Um, so, you know, this is, this is just a way to get there, you know, kibbles and bits make hunks and trunks. So, um, yeah, I think this is a, I think this is, uh, this is good. Uh, do we have any comments? Or we'll now open up for public comment. No public comment. All right. Does the board wish to deliberate any further on this item?
I think, I just wanna say thank you to DOLA for supporting this program as much as they do, um, and being great partners.
Yeah, good, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Any, anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Do I have a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution number sixty-three dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution of the Wellington Board of Trustees, authorizing the allocation of funds for the Main Street Mini Grant.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Perfect. Ms. Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Mayor Porton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, was you unanimous?
Thank you. All right, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item, thank you, Ken. Uh, will you please read the title for item F two?
Resolution number sixty-four dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution amending the town administrator contract.
Thank you. Ms. Stephanie Anderson, the Human Resource Director will present on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Trustees. I'm Stephanie Anderson. I'm the H R Director. I am here this evening to present a contract amendment for Patty Garcia, our town administrator. Ms. Garcia's performance evaluation was conducted in executive session on November twelfth and was favorable. The adopted twenty twenty-five budget included a five percent increase in wages for staff members. This five percent was split evenly to include a two point five percent cost of living or COLA adjustment and a two point five percent merit pool to be distributed based on performance. So the method to determine Ms. Garcia's new salary is the same method that is used for all town staff members. So based on the results of the review, the recommendation for Ms. Garcia is a COLA increase of two point five percent and a merit adjustment of two point one seven percent, leading to an annual salary of a hundred seventy-nine thousand, twenty-four dollars and seventy cents. Um, so you have the resolution in your packet, and it would, um, change the salary amount and also just reappoint her as our administrator for another year. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Teets?
Um, I don't have any questions, only comments.
Thank you. Trustee Moore?
No questions.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon?
No questions.
Trustee Wigan?
No questions.
Trustee Daly? Mayor Porten?
No questions, just comments.
Thank you very much. Um, we will move on to comments. Trustee Moyer?
I think that it's clear to those of us up here that work closely with the staff that Patty works tirelessly. I don't know that she's been on a vacation since I've been on this board where she hasn't continuously communicated with us at some point. Um, I believe that two point five is the average COLA increase across the nation for twenty twenty-five, and we're recommending a little bit lower than that. Um, I believe she deserves more, and I don't, um, want anyone to think that this money would be going to decreasing water bills or any other allocation. I wanna make it clear that this is money set aside for staff that has already been budgeted for and approved. And so I'm in full favor of, um, approving this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Teets?
Yes, so I just, I'm gonna make a statement here. Um, so I'm gonna start this off with clarification because often words after being shared can be used away by others in a way they are not meant to sound. Um, I do not support the raise aspect of this contract while I support the hire. Um, I can't at this time and good conscience support the raises. It's also the reason why I voted no on our twenty twenty-five's budget. It's not that I don't appreciate all of our town employees. It's, I feel each one brings a high value of experience in their field, but it's time for us as trustees to start discussing and accepting what our budget will support compared to what the costs are coming out of these salaries. Since twenty, I think it's twenty twenty, when Ms. Garcia first came on with us, she's had thirty-five thousand dollars in raises just in that period. So that's when I start looking at it, and I'm just like, you know, so many years, thirty-five thousand dollars in raises. I mean, that's a standard wage for somebody in general. So it's just, it's hard for me to move forward supporting this, knowing where we sit with pulling funds from fund balance and a lot of our accounts. So I just, I can't support the raise aspect of this, but I will support the hire aspect of this.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan?
I'll try not to cough. Uh, I appreciate what you've done. Uh, so much work that you put in tirelessly. I do support the raise. I wish we had plenty of money where that wasn't a controversial thing at all, but I do support that. You know, especially like, you know, I got my social security, uh, uh, new amount that they're gonna pay out. They gave us a two point five percent raise, which ended up being a decrease from what we actually received. So, yeah, I mean, it's kind of, and this is the kind of thing that we're gonna have to be, uh, uh, recognized with the community. I mean, there's a lot of people that's gonna be going through some hardships through here. And especially the elderly, the people that are on fixed incomes out there. Uh, but hopefully, and I know the direction that, uh, our town administrator does, she is for this town. She's tried to improve it. Uh, I love the smart goals, and I know we're probably gonna try to expand on that maybe a little bit. But, uh, if we can do anything and, you know, bring some more income or it's money into the town, that's gonna be great and help offset everything. So, you know, we gotta make it so our town people do feel appreciated. So, and we know that, uh, our expectations are high, and with what we're doing here, we demand, you know, completion of those expectations. So appreciate it and, uh, appreciate you. Bye.
Thank you. Trust Ken?
Thank you, and, uh, thank you, Ms. Garcia, for all you're doing as our town administrator. Uh, I know how tough of a job that can be, and, um, and I've seen Wellington go back and forth and on administrator pay, and it gets ugly sometimes, and it shouldn't. Um, but I am full support of this. Uh, the only thing that I would like to point out is that, um, why are we amending a contract once a year? I mean, the national trend for town managers and, and city leadership, uh, especially in that executive position, is an open-ended contract. There is no, it expires in one year or expires in two years. It's an open-ended contract. The language that we have in our current contract talks about, uh, reasons for termination, reasons for, uh, you know, uh, when it might be, uh, advisable for, uh, to end a, an administrator's, uh, employment, and that's always for cause. Having a one-year renewable contract, quite frankly, from an administrator's standpoint, is a lot of heartache it is to have to go through and listen to the abuse that comes from those in the community who don't understand the roles and the responsibilities of, of a chief executive officer in charge of a major organization like this with, with sixty, seventy, some odd employees and a budget of, of what we've got here. I would personally like to see us move to a, just an open-ended contract, saying, okay, you are hired until either you resign for whatever reason, you're retired, you take another job or whatever, or you let go for cause, in which case. But to have an open, to have a one-year renewable contract, we're always coming back and debating this and, and laying your soul bare out in public is, is ridiculous. And, uh, quite frankly, it's, it's not something that I C M A supports. Uh, that's the International City Count, uh, uh, City Management Association. Uh, it is not the trend with, uh, with city managers. And the only reason I could ever think for having a one-year renewable contract is, is the off chance that maybe we just won't renew the contract if we're not satisfied. Well, that doesn't make a darn bit of sense either. If you're gonna let somebody go by not renewing their contract, you might as well just let them go for no cause and pay them severance pay and everything else. But that's the only thing I But that's the only thing I would like to see different, is to rewrite the contract without a, without a termination date that says we have to come back and renew this once a year. Thank you.
Is that something that could be amended in passing of this or it requires coming back before the board? You would need to review, write a contract?
That kind of change would require a significant rewrite of the contract.
Okay, just verifying. Thank you.
And just do that with an amendment.
I would one-hundred percent support that. Thank you, Trustee Cannon.
Trustee Daly?
I support that completely as well. I mean, you can remove, you know, staff for cause at any given time. It's not required to be done at the end of a contract or anything like that. So it doesn't remove any rights that we would have to remove, um, you know, staff for the purpose of needing to do so for cause. So I completely support that too and I'd be welcome to, um, tabling this item or whatever would be recommended until that contract was prepared. So I don't know if that would be a suitable solution or amending it later would be, but I just wanna bring up, who knows what the options are. Also, within our budget process, we approve COLA and, you know, performance-based and merit increases. So I don't know why, uh, and then that merit is distributed based on performance. There's existing processes in place that we hear about in depth and, and support through the budget process that we learn about every single year and, and I'm satisfied with it. So I also don't see as part of the contract renewal additionally bringing back the merit and COLA pieces that we've already approved through the budget process. There's absolutely no reason why that should come in front of us again, um, if we've already approved those, those amounts. Um, and the model of distribution that they're operationally operating with is, you know, we are aware of it. So, um, I, I agree and I think bringing up topics like this are bad for Wellington rather than focusing on improvement and growth. It's hurtful to the organization as a whole. Um, one of our strategic items is to invest in, retain and hire skilled staff. Um, and I would say that improving processes is just as important as that. So I wholly stand behind, um, creating a, a contract that is, that has, uh, no completion date. And then I would love to not see specific individuals' merit pay, um, in this forum going forward, but rather to follow the standard processes for merit and COLA increases that we apply to and, and approve for the entire staff of the town.
Thank you. Mayor Porton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I just wanted to, uh, address maybe a few comments I had seen over the last week as far as that goes. Um, well, and I suppose how I would start off is, uh, you know, Administrator Garcia, I think, does an absolutely wonderful job. And, uh, she opted out of taking her, her merit increase last year to spread that around to, uh, some of the other staff and help bump up their, uh, merit amounts. I thought that was very graceful of her. I think, uh, as far as some of the comments I had seen, of the top thirteen municipalities in the Northern Front Range, the average town administrator salary is two-hundred-forty-one thousand, seven-hundred-twenty-six. Obviously, this includes Fort Collins, Greeley, Loveland, Windsor. If you take those out and you simply include population amounts of thirteen thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty or less, right, so just around where we are, uh, the average salary for those are two-hundred-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven. So the amount that we're talking about given here is one-seventy-nine oh twenty-four. Uh, that is significantly less and is, in fact, the lowest of all of those thirteen municipalities. So, um, I do support this. I, I know what it takes to do the job. I've, you know, working with Administrator Garcia has been nothing but absolutely wonderful. She's been very responsive to, I think, any question that this board has ever had and always gets that, gets us that information in a timely fashion. So, uh, like I said, as far as these numbers goes, it's very clear that she's still gonna be much below what the average amount is and I think it is important for us to recognize that. So I am in support.
Thank you, sir. Start my own timer here. Yeah, I'm glad you stated those numbers. I was, I was gonna bring that up as well. I am in support of this, one-hundred percent. I'm in support of what, uh, Trustee Cannon mentioned. I think, you know, if I was working for somebody and every year I had to go under review where they get to choose whether to continue working with me outside of being a consultant where I chose that path, um, in something administrative at such a level as this, uh, that would be stressful. You'd be walking on eggshells all the time. You'd never know, um, what's gonna happen, what's gonna occur. So I, I am in support of, of looking at that and, and, and doing that as well. Yeah, I think a lot of the things that were, are said on social media most of the time are, uh, just ill-informed, uneducated. And, um, I'm not saying I don't hear them. I don't, I, I see them. I listen to them. But when you look at the facts, like the ones of the average pay for a city manager in our area, um, when you're looking at the real numbers, uh, Patty gets paid far less than the average in our area and that's towns of our same size. Uh, so I have no concerns whatsoever, um, with, with doing this raise. Uh, she answers my phone calls all hours of the night, all hours of the wee morning. I wake up early. She probably doesn't like it, but she answers them. So, uh, I should probably be better at it. But, um, needless to say, she works hard and, uh, she's, she's always doing what she can for the town. And I, I just commend you on the hard work you put in. Uh, you're not, you know, an elected official and sometimes you put up with the stuff that elected officials should, are the ones that should be taking the brunt of. And, uh, so I apologize on behalf of the town of Wellington and let's talk Wellington to you. Um, it's just rude and uncalled for. So, um, we gotta be better at loving each other and respecting people in this community. And I think this is a great point to, uh, make right now. So that's all I have to say on that. At this moment, we will open up for public comment. Members wishing to speak will be given three minutes. State your name for the record. All right, no public comment. Does the board want to deliberate on this any further?
What would be the, what would be the suggested, um, path forward if we wanted to extend or?
Make it a future?
As had recommended?
If I could, before, before Dan does, um, ICMA has sample contracts. You know, chief executive officer com, uh, contracts. Uh, it can be found on their website. You can also find that by, uh, reaching out through various listservs in Colorado and reaching out to, uh, other professionals out there who, who, who do this kind of work. It is a long contract, but it doesn't have to be. Uh, what I would recommend doing is pulling that, reviewing that, see how that could be incorporated into our existing framework with our contract. It's really just a matter of, of changing the language in there that, that talks about, you know, the terms of the contract, you know, from this date until this date. You know, by leaving it open-ended, it kinda goes back.
Oh, point order. I think, I think Dan can bring it back. He can look into it.
I'd recommend approving this. If that's the direction you'd like to go, I'd recommend approving this with no amendment. There's no other, nothing else in the motion, just approve this, this contract as is.
Okay.
Uh, because we are at a stage where the, it needs to be, she needs to be appointed every year. Um, this is also has timing with her, her salary and other things. So a, approve this as is and then hearing the board, um, we can begin discussions, um, internally on, on what that might look like. And, and yeah, it, it might be as simple as replacing clauses. It might be, um, time to do a, a, a new contract because at this point we're on the Fourth Amendment to the contract. Um, so i- it, it might be time to, 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 to draft a new contract entirely. So approve this one as is. It needs to be done and then we can begin those discussions and, and figure out a timeline.
Thank you for the direction.
Thank you. Uh, do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve Resolution number sixty-four dash twenty-two-four, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Wellington, Colorado, will approve an amendment to the employment agreement with the town administrator.
Second.
Ms. Clerk, make a roll call, please.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Moyer?
Yes.
Trustee Teetz?
No.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Porton Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Mayor, the vote was six to one in favor.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you all for this and I, I want you to know that, you know, I know that my salary is lower than the others. I, and I, it was not a surprise to me when I saw those results, but one of the benefits of Wellington far outreached some of that salary that others are making because I have this amazing team that I work with, that we support each other. And I'll give you an example. Tonight, we found out that somebody had actually booked that back room for a party at six P.M. for forty people. And so we went down, we talked to Billy. Billy went down, talked to the Boys and Girls Club. Boys and Girls Club cleared out some space. We had seasonals come and pick up tables and take it over and get everything set up. That doesn't happen in most municipalities. Usually you're very siloed and if there's a problem, you've gotta deal with it and you don't get support. So, and I have a great board that I work with and a lot of municipalities don't have that. There's boards that are troublesome and have difficulties communicating and, and you all have made leaps and strides in communicating and working together and finding solutions for the town. So I, I appreciate each and every one of you. I thank you for your comments and I am excited for another year working with the Town of Wellington and accomplishing goals. And twenty-twenty-five is our year. We believe this. There's gonna be some really cool things that happen this year. So thank you.
Uh, Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item F-three?
Resolution number sixty-five dash twenty-two-four, a resolution considering the twenty-twenty-five Statement of Work and Budget Agreement by and between the County of Laramie and the Town of Wellington.
Thank you. Interim Lieutenant of the Laramie County Sheriff's Office, Matt Cherry, will present.
Good evening, Board. Um, I'm sure that you will breathe a, a big sigh of relief. This will probably be my last time presenting to the Board. So if you want to just clap right now, that's, uh, thank you.
I am crying inside.
I will say that, um, I have been honored once again. I was a deputy in Wellington for a number, number of years before I got promoted and went on to other things. Um, came back. I'm again honored, uh, to serve my hometown. I've lived here for twenty years. Um, it's been a thrill to, to get used to the town again and the law enforcement aspect. I'm kinda looking forward to going to the grocery store and, uh, not seeing people that I regularly interact with. So, um, so that's, uh, one of my, the one of the perks, but, um, the town has been very gracious in just how you've, uh, treated me. I appreciate the, the relationships that I've developed with all of you. Um, the town has just been fantastic to work with. I mean, I didn't get up and talk regarding Caitlin and, and her involvement with the town, but, uh, between, uh, the Sheriff's Office, uh, the Main Street Program and the Town of Wellington, some of the events that we've, we've had the opportunity to work together on have been hugely successful. I mean, we look at the holiday parade. Anytime that a parade goes off without a hitch, maybe little things that we can tweak here and there, but everybody was safe. It was a success. Um, so, uh, although I hate sitting in a room being extremely bored, um, just watching the parade go by on a monitor, um, if everybody is safe and healthy, then it's a good day. So. Uh, the purpose for my, uh, presentation today is to talk about the Statement of Work and, and Budget. Uh, as you know, there's a five-year contract, uh, between, or a five-year agreement between the Town of Wellington and Laramie County. Talks about the services that the Sheriff's Office, uh, will provide to the town. Uh, and in that agreement, uh, basically it specifies that on an annual basis, we will come up with a new Statement of, uh, Work and Budget that essentially just is an amendment to, uh, the, the five-year agreement and reflecting any changes of staffing and obviously the budget. Uh, I don't know that I necessarily want to go into some of the things that Sheriff Fan has already discussed when we, uh, met with you for the work session in October. If you have any questions about that, I'm happy to entertain those. Um, I think that, um, I think a lot of those questions were answered. I know we talked about the Community Impact Deputy Position that's being tabled until the future. That's awesome. Um, but as far as any, any relevant changes to the statements, uh, it was some very minor changes and it was really reflective of, um, uh, investigations hours, uh, the twenty-twenty-four contract, or this twenty-twenty-four statement essentially talked about that, uh, when we had a half-time investigator position, that those hours that the investigator was working, uh, on town cases was on average about a hundred and sixty hours. Uh, they just made that change to reflect that it's a hundred and seventy-one hours and a full-time investigator is dedicated to working on cases, uh, for the Town of Wellington. Um, so it's really the only change and then obviously change in some of the, the, the hours worked to bump that up from the one-sixty to the one-seventy-one. And then, of course, the, the budget that you've already seen, obviously there's some changes just in the increases. Overall, uh, between one-point-nine and two-point-one million dollars, the change is just under eight percent. There's variations with the budget, but the biggest chunk of that is, uh, just salaries. The three, three percent COLA cost of living, uh, and then they add an additional step to the deputy step plan. So there's seven steps, uh, that a deputy has to go through to be topped out full, full-time pay. They added, added an additional step, um, so that we can remain competitive with other agencies like Fort Collins Police, Tim, Tim the Police, Tim the Police. There seems to be this constant thing of who's gonna be, you know, at the top. Um, and obviously if we want to be competitive in recruiting, retainment, those types of things, those, those numbers go up. So with that five percent increase with that additional step, uh, that moved everybody else up and that's where you see the, uh, the changes, the increases, uh, in the salaries, which amounts to roughly eight percent. So, um, any questions for me?
Trustee Teetz?
Comments?
Questions or comments? Go for it.
Perfect. Okay, so I love reading your guys' reports. You guys are amazing at the detail that you do provide. Um, there was two things in the of note section and if you guys want to follow along, it's page one-sixty-seven in our packet. Um, I bring this to note because I, I hope that this gets out to anybody watching that would intend to do harm to children. So Colorado Pedophile Patrol, a group of civilians who pretended to be underage subjects with the intent to lure internet sexual predators confronted a twenty-two-year-old male after he agreed to meet with a decoy, a fictitious thirteen-year-old girl, for sex at a hotel. Deputies interviewed the subject and he provided a confession about his intent to have sexual contact with the fictitious female. Now, I'm not saying that you just run out and do this on your own as a civilian. I'm saying that I love the fact that you guys have a Colorado Pedophile Patrol and that... Oh, so is this the, Colorado, is this a group you guys are associated with?
It's not a group that we're associated with. We just respond to the call. This is something that they do on their own.
And then you were involved in their chival?
And as soon as they identify somebody that, that, um, is trying to engage in one of these agreements, um, then they will confront the person and then call law enforcement and turn over a lot of the, the evidence that they have, that they obtained during their investigation.
Okay, perfect. Awesome. The other one was deputies and...
Real, real quick.
Sorry.
Um, just a quick point of order. You're going into his report and we're discussing the contract.
Okay.
So, um, do you have anything on the contract? And then we can, we can discuss that at a, okay.
No.
Trustee Moyer?
Nothing. I'm just so grateful for your service. I have a million children and every single event that they have at school, regardless of what school it is, I feel like I see you there and you always have a smile on your face. And you're just such an asset to this community. So is LCSO. So thank you for showing up everywhere, for supporting all of the different organizations in town and for keeping us all safe.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Trustee Cannon? Great job.
Thank you. Trustee Wiegand?
Appreciate what you guys do and I do want to mention, I think it's Morrison, has disbanding their share, or police department and taken on the... and taking on the county as Jeff Co., I think it is. And I think because, you know, the way you guys do it is perfect. We don't live by tickets and writing citations and all this. You guys serve and protect us and you guys do a great job. This is where this thing is so valuable for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Daly.
This, well, contract has a lot of items like salary, vehicles, overhead costs, office supplies, those kind of things. We had the opportunity, of course, to visit Laramie County Sheriff's Office and see all the other resources that are available to Wellington that are perks or bonuses associated with this contract. So I noticed drones at the parade. I assume those were Laramie County. Okay. Yeah, I assume so. I was like, hey. So I noticed that. I also have noticed the Laramie County Ranch barriers. Yes, I always forget what those are called. The barriers that have been in multiple of our events too. So in understanding this contract and, you know, what is included here and listed on this, on this table of the actual expenses, I know and realize and hope that the public is also understanding we have huge advantages of resources from Laramie County Sheriff's Office that are abundantly shared to the town of Wellington, that are far exceed any opportunity we'd ever have on our own. And it's cutting edge, not to mention if we were to have a major incident, I feel safe knowing that Laramie County sheriffs are taking care of us. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Porton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lieutenant Cherry, really appreciate all the work you've done, obviously over the last number of years, years, and your contribution to this community has been absolutely invaluable. So just want to wish you good luck in your next endeavor and appreciate everything you've done. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. First off, you guys provide a wonderful policing culture. And looking at the contract, you guys make it very clear, you, we've had multiple conversations about this on, on why there's increases. It all makes sense. It's very straightforward. You guys are wonderful to work with. It was a pleasure to get to sit down with the gentleman who most likely will end up taking the sergeant position and have that conversation with him. And so I thank you for your time and dedication to this community, not just being a resident, but, but serving and protecting it. And I, I have no qualms or questions on, on the contract. So thank you.
Sure.
At this point, we will open up for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak will be given three minutes. Please state your name for the record. No public comment. Okay. Does the board wish to deliberate further on this item?
I do, since I thought we were doing discussion and questions. I didn't know that it was just questions and then I heard the remaining discussion. So back to my point is, is I was working up to the generalized idea that we do have access to so much more than what we gain from having a police station here ourselves. The community interactions you had, I was going to share in the report about the adoption event that you guys had and connecting with the community and the competition. So they had a competition to do with, is it canine bones? What, what was the?
Big bone.
Yes. So, and it was a competition to see who could get their dogs adopted out. So I thought it was extremely cool and I didn't, it doesn't say in there who won the competition or if it was, but it raised a lot of money for LC SO from what I was reading. So I think it was an amazing opportunity and I absolutely think that in all of the things that we are held accountable to as trustees and the constitution holds, holds us accountable to it is the fact that we are safety involved. So that's one of the things when you look at what we're supposed to be doing and this feels good supporting this because I know it's actually something we're supposed to be doing. So no, I'm extremely grateful for everything that you guys do and we got to watch your drones fly over our head at the T-bar when we were unloading everything and carrying big bags. So I'm sure we looked rather suspicious at the start of the event. So it followed us for a little bit. So it was doing its job, I guarantee it. But no, I'm grateful for everything you guys do and I don't have an issue with the contract.
Great, thank you. Okay, do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve resolution, resolution number sixty-five dash twenty twenty-four, a resolution considering the twenty twenty-five statement of work and budget agreement by and between the county of Laramie and the town of Wellington.
Second. That one went to Sherrell. I think that second went to Sherrell. Let's go, may I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Cannon.
Yes.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Yes.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Porton Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Mayor, it was unanimous in favor.
Thank you.
Can I just say that it was the dogs that won that day? The dogs won.
Okay, that's.
Okay, perfect.
I think that's a good way to put it.
Everybody won. Okay. Mr. Dezepi, is it, do you have anything to report this evening?
Nothing today.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, do you have anything to report this evening?
Quickly, you all talked several times about the Chamber and Main Street working together with the town and I've tentatively set up a joint meeting with them for January twenty-one for our work session. I'm, I'm waiting to hear confirmation back from both, both boards, but that has been scheduled and invites have been sent out. So I'll keep you all posted on that. And we talked a little bit about the shop local marketing campaign and RFP has been drafted for that. We'll do a soft launch prior to the holidays. And so Kelly Hodling has been gathering names of businesses and things like that to send that RFP to so we can get a, a good, a good selection.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Board reports are, or staff communications are in the packet. Board reports. Trustee Moyer.
I have nothing for you tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Teetz.
I have nothing.
Trustee Wiegand.
We had a meeting with the Behavioral Health Policy Council and it's been one year, I think December second, since the new facility opened up. They had planned for five thousand this last year, the people that they served ended up being sixty-five, eighty-five. So the demand is great. And, and different things that they do, I mean, they have their urgent care down there, twenty, twenty-three observation rooms there with draw management, pharmacies, labs. I mean, it's a complete setup. And that's available to, you know, any of the citizens that we have here that need it. They were saying that, what is it, eighty percent of the people that have used it so far are Laramie County residents, ten percent are from Weld and Laramie up in Cheyenne, and the rest were from elsewhere. And they were saying like there's only twenty-six out of that six hundred or six thousand eight or five eighty-five, twenty-six of them had ten or more visits. So, I mean, it is definitely serving an extremely good purpose. And, you know, it's there for us and appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. That's huge. Trustee Cannon.
Thank you. Last Friday, I was at a CML Policy Committee meeting down in Denver. Nothing significant to report. It was still early in the season, so it went pretty quick. We were over in about an hour and a half. But as we progress into the spring and late winter and spring, when more bills are being introduced, there'll be more things to talk about, but nothing to report from that meeting.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Daly.
I wanted to thank everybody who came out for Small Business Saturday. We heard it a couple of times from Main Street. I know that there's also a holiday gift guide by the Chamber of Commerce. All these programs are out there supporting and encouraging people to shop locally. I want to just put a plea out there because I know there's a lot of holiday shopping and everyday shopping that people do. And maybe consider supporting your friends and neighbors of the money that's spent in town. That money recycles to the town. So you pay a business owner who also happens to be your neighbor for a product and then they utilize that money and spend that money in town. That money stays here. So it's really important. And the reason why I like to bring this up, and maybe you've heard me say I sound like a broken record, but when you travel to other towns and you spend your money there, you're building their parks, you're improving their streets, you're building their libraries, you're working on their major capital products, you're giving your money to other towns to make those improvements. When, and then if you in turn also are very critical of Wellington's budget and whether or not we have the money to pay for these projects, your potholes, anything like that, I want you guys to remember that the money you spend in sales tax, property tax is what we use for those expenses. So it, it is really a community collective agreement where if everybody chose to actively spend their money in town, we would have more money to make the improvements that you seek. So the next time you're frustrated, for example, with streets, with having amenities or whatever the case might be, I would really challenge you to be introspective and say, how can I help? And by changing our habits, improving others and, and suggesting that others do the same, that is really what is going to make the difference in order for our town to be supportive and, and to have all the amenities and, and be at the quality that you want. So you have control over that. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware. So Small Business Saturday was a wonderful outpouring of people who intentionally came out to support our small businesses. But that's only one day of the year and they need your support every day of the year. So please give them that benefit. The other fun thing to do when you're downtown, for example, shopping is you can start looking for elves for the elf hunt. Main Street program's doing a two hundred dollar giveaway. You find your elves, if you can track them all down, submit the card and there's a drawing for a two hundred dollar gift card. So that's definitely worth it. And then otherwise, from the pros' perspective, they are trucking away, doing amazing things and doing a lot of planning for next year. And, and I just want to say thank you to all of our volunteers who serve on advisory boards, who make a huge difference and have a very large voice and listen to the community. And I just appreciate your support so much.
Thank you. Mayor Porton.
Well, thank you, Trustee Daly, for putting us through that agony with the microphone. The only thing I have to report is that the Laramie County Opioid Abatement Council is finalizing our grant applications and approval process for the twenty twenty-five fiscal year. I see, it does sound like the council's going to be in full support of the, I think the Laramie County Sheriff's Office had requested about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars this year. So it does look like we're on track to get that approved as well as an additional grant to our friends up here at Harvest Farms. So I will get those numbers back to you, back to y'all when I have them finalized. And Mr. Redavid, I did just want to let you know that I do, I am working on an answer to the question that you emailed me regarding making sure that those funds are paid directly to the council. I will get you that answer next meeting.
Thank you, sir. I mean, yeah, I met with Sergeant Cherry, well, Lieutenant Cherry, and then the gentleman who's going to be taking his position as sergeant, Russell Downing. I, I couldn't grasp that. Thank you for that. He is in the same fashion of policing, a really great guy, maybe even a clone of Sergeant or Lieutenant Cherry. So we will be in good hands. That's really, really cool to see. So that's all that I have to report on. And then just enjoy working with you guys and it's really cool to be up here with you guys and I appreciate you, all of you and initiatives that you guys put in place to get things done for the town, whether it's events, the things you go to, you attend outside of these board meetings. You're going the extra mile and, and it shows and, you know, you guys put in a lot of work. So thank you for that. Town staff, you guys too. I like you guys. I appreciate you guys. It's not an easy job, but you're doing it. You're doing it well. That's all I have for that. Ms. Clerk, will you please read the title for item H one?
An executive session pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two for FI to discuss personal matters concerning the town attorney under circumstances where the town attorney has not requested an open meeting as required by CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two to D point five, two A and two E, the executive proceedings will be electronically recorded and the record will be preserved for ninety days through March fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Point of order.
Yep.
If we could just go ahead and read number two as well, that way we don't have to come out of executive session to read that and, and go back into executive session because the, our last actions, two items, right?
There are two separate exec, we need to treat them as two separate executive sessions.
It will have to call it twice.
Are you just?
You can read them both and then enter executive session and go after number one, the number two instead of.
For the record, I'd like to call them separate.
All right.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Those of you that are still in the audience, please exit.
Thank you. Congrats.
Are you ready for roll call, Mayor?
Oh, yeah, we can go ahead. May I get a roll call, please?
Thank you. Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Yes.
Trustee Moyer.
Here.
Trustee Teetz.
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Porton Mason.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
It was unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you. We will now enter executive session.